That means we're called to order. Good evening, welcome to your City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 1st, 2015, and it's seven o'clock, more or less. Regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Minigard?
Present.
Councilmember Slusiewicz?
Present.
Councilmember Genaway?
Present.
Mayor Protam Davies?
Here.
And Mayor McCloskey.
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Okay, thanks a lot. I'd like to ask Melanie LaChelle of Bahai Faith Community Church to come forward for the invocation, and then we'll have Girl Scout Brownie Troop 32-8 come forward to lead us in the pledge.
This is a prayer for America from the Bahai writings. Oh thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated with the message of thy glad tidings. Oh God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees even as it has aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to upraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. Oh God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestow.
Color Guard, events. Color, Color Guard present the colors. With the Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and Audience, please join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the nice states of the America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the faithful with liberty and justice for all. Audience may be seated.
Okay, thank you, girls. Stay down there. Okay, one of the things we like to do is make sure that these fine ladies get a chance to introduce themselves, so if you can give us your first name, or your name, your whole name actually, and the school, and then pass the microphone down to the next person.
My name is Sydney Faith Char Smith, and I go to Molton Elementary School.
My name, my name is Haley Reed, and I go to Molton Elementary School.
My name is Katie Arani, and I go to Molton Elementary School.
My name is Malia Mama Willis, and I go to Molton Elementary School.
My name is Isabel Scalzo, and I go to Molton Elementary School.
My name is Kira, and I go to Molton Elementary School.
My name is Ebi Sherfius, and I go to Molton Elementary School.
My name is Gracie, and I go to Molton Elementary School.
My name is Charlotte, and I go to Molton Elementary School.
I know what school you go to.
My name is Marissa Home, and I go to Molton Elementary School.
Got it. I was, I was afraid for a second there. Thank you, and you may retire the colors. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to our, thank you, girls, we're gonna move on to our presentations. We have one presentation this evening that the U.S. Black Belt Academy requested, that they would like it to be rescheduled, so later to the date, but tonight we have a proclamation declaring September 17th to 23rd as Constitution Week, and I will read the proclamation which will be mailed to Ms. Pam Burris, Chairman for the Daughters of the American Revolution, Mission Viejo Chapter. Constitution Week, September 17th to 23rd, 2015. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America, and whereas September 17th, 2015, marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is of the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to support, preserve, and defend it against all encroachment, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document in its memorable anniversary, and whereas the independence guaranteed to American citizens is celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd, 2015, as designated by proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with Public Law 915. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jerry McCloskey, on behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, do hereby declare the week of September 17th to 23rd, 2015, as Constitution Week, and urge our citizens to reflect on the privileges and responsibilities of American citizenship. Thank you. We have a proclamation that we will be delivering to the Daughters of the American Revolution. And I can just add, probably the greatest document ever written on this earth was the Constitution of the United States of America, and I'm, I'm proud to honor it in this proclamation along with the other people. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our presentations and brings us to public communications. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is required to submit a complete gold-colored Request to Speak form to the City Clerk prior to being heard by the City Council. Each person will be given three minutes to speak, and I have two requests to speak. Madam Clerk, do we have any more? Okay, let me see, are they agenda items or non-agenda? Public, these are both public communications, so first one I will call up is Donna Mulvaney for a Girl Scout announcement.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Donna Mulvaney. I live at 23862 Windmill Lane, Laguna Niguel. I'm here to announce a special evening for parents of girls ranging from kindergarten to 12th grade. We are having a Girl Scout rally on September 30th, 2015, located at Malcolm Elementary School on Charles Road at 6:30 PM. In Girl Scouts, you and your daughter can join other girls to learn about camping, travel adventures, learning patriotism by offering community services, you have seen these Brownie Girl Scouts this evening. We hope you and your daughter accept this invitation to start the fun in being a Girl Scout by attending this Girl Scout rally September 30th at 6:30. I have given the flyer to the City Clerk and the members of the City Council, where there will also be flyers available at City Hall, YMCA, and the Parks and Rec Office on Crown Valley Parkway. We hope to see you on September 30th. Turn around, girls.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, girls. We have a request from, I'm having trouble, is that Michelle Campbell? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Michelle Placel Campbell. I live at 24731 Cali Vieja in Laguna Niguel. My house backs to the current Crown Valley Elementary School where my two boys attend. Currently, the Capus Final Unified School District has, under consideration, the closure of the community school for a relocation of a charter school. I request that the City Council, I know you cannot directly affect the school board, but make known that Crown Valley is the oldest school in Laguna Niguel. We are one year short of our 50th anniversary, and we really request that your help in helping prevent the closure of our community school for a charter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna close public communications as we have no other request to speak, and we're gonna move on to the consent calendar, items 1 through 11. Are there any items that need to be pulled for comments or discussion? And I would like to pull items 5 through 11 in one group, if I may, for discussion. Are there any other items that need to be pulled?
Make a motion to move items 1 through 4 unless somebody's gonna pull it, I'm sorry if I jump too quickly.
No, I'd like to pull item 6.
Well, 5 through 7, 5 through 11 were pulled, so we can have a motion on the balance of the consent calendar, items 1 through 4. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The reason I asked to have these pulled is that they are, a lot of them are new contracts with various outside vendors, and I think it would behoove us to make sure that we understand what, what's going on here. These are normally consent items, but I think because of the number of them, that it'd be worthy of some comment on them. So I would like to just start out with number 5. It's a proof of base agreement with Hoffman Southwest Corporation, DBA Roto-Rooter Plumbers, for three years, including two optional one-year additional extension years, and authorize the city manager execute the contract documents. How are we doing this in the past, announcer?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, this is actually the first time that we'll have a contract for plumbing services. We've, we never had a plumbing contract in place before. Staff had to get bids constantly on small to mid-sized projects, so in an effort to have a well-qualified contractor in place, staff sent out requests for proposals, and we have a qualified contractor that we are recommending this evening. I should mention that the, not only on this project, but also the other proposals that you have before you this evening. Staff had contacted local vendors that we'd worked with in the past. We also advertised the request for proposals on the city website. We also reached out to trade publications, I'll mention those, Builders, Notebook, Bid America, and SoCal Builders, to make sure that the word gets out there, and on some of these, we had initial interest even as far as San Diego. However, you can see, in case of the plumbing, RFP, we only received one proposal. However, the numbers that have given, that have been given to us, those are reasonable numbers, so that's why we're recommending the approval of this particular contract this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on number 5? Oh, you have a comment?
Sure. Mr. Abizada, who did we use in the past to do our plumbing?
We've, we've used different companies. I think we have used Brent Company in the past, and a couple other local companies that we've used. The names escaped me, but we've used different companies to provide plumbing.
And about $40,000 a year. In your previous city experience, since you're fairly new to us as our Public Works Director, how did they operate with contracts? Did they have a plumbing contract, or do they, how do they do it?
Each city is different. If they have their own maintenance workers, sometimes they'll handle it.
Contract cities like us, because obviously if they have an internal.
Contract cities, they will, they will have a contract similar to this, so they can use outside contracts.
Use RFP and they go, okay, thank you, sir.
I have a question. With the contract with Hoffman Southwest, does that preclude us from using any other plumbers? We've had other ones that we've used in the past that we've seen on the warrant register. Can we use them?
No, it doesn't preclude us from using others. In fact, if there's, I would call medium to a large job, if we get a number from this particular company that we're not happy with, we can definitely reach out and hire someone else, get different bids. The contract is spelled out as such, and this $40,000 a year, it's not guaranteed by any means. It's basically based, it's based on city needs, and like I said, on larger jobs, we can go out there and get different bids.
Okay, and on smaller ones as well, if Hoffman is not available to respond in a timely manner?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, you have a question? Go ahead.
Being that there was only one bid out there, is that because of the requirements that you're asking, and a lot of the other companies weren't able to meet those requirements?
We contacted some of the, two companies that have provided service to us in the past, just to find out. We did not really get a good response from as to why they were not interested. Like I said, actually this particular, as well as the other item, general maintenance, we had to advertise those twice because the first time around, we did not get any bids on those.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna try to handle this all in one fell swoop. Number 6 is Agreement with Superior Property Services Incorporated to provide painting and graffiti removal services, and you're asking for a three-year contract with two optional one-year additional extensions. Could you comment on that one?
Yes, the same way. This is the first time that we'll have a painting contractor to work with us. We follow the same format, went out with requests for proposals. We did receive two proposals in this case. We're recommending the low company Superior Property that will provide painting as well as graffiti removal, and this basically deals with issues that we have at city parks and city facilities.
Well, I know our graffiti removal program is outstanding.
Yes, it is.
So I hope it keeps going that way, then, very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
I'd like to address item 6. One of the key factors in keeping graffiti from spreading is key remove, is quick removal, and that's not addressed in this contract, so I'd like to have something added that they need to start the removal of the graffiti within 24 hours, because we don't want it to spread, and this company is based, I think, in Pico Rivera, so I don't think we want time to become an issue and invite other graffiti artists.
We, actually, the city policy is to address graffiti within 24 hours, and we have discussed the issue with this company, and they, they will respond to us within 24 hours.
Okay, so being in city policy, that does hold them to that standard?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Also, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just have something put on the record. There are seven items on this consent calendar for eight contracts, and I know with timing, there's timing issues with vacations and needing to print the agenda packet, and I spoke to our city attorney earlier today, and the staff reports do not bear his signature, but confirmed with him that he has reviewed all of the staff reports and the contracts, and has agreed with the content of them. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
I was in Utah last week on vacation, as most of you know. Before I left for Utah, I had reviewed a couple of different drafts of most of these agreements, and had suggested changes. I haven't reviewed these things. Then the agenda report I reviewed in the sense that was described to me, and I gave authorization to use my name, as indicated that I had reviewed it. I still need to review them one more time before I actually sign off on them. I did note, and I think you may have noted it, an error in one of the agreements where the, the wrong service got added when I added in a provision, but yeah, basically, I've reviewed these, I think these agreements are fine, I think they meet all requirements.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna make sure we're not approving anything that hasn't been reviewed by our city attorney.
Any other comment?
I just have one quick protocol question for our city attorney. The ultimate decision-maker with regard to this signature would be the city manager or the city attorney? I presume it's the city manager. You're the CEO, correct?
Yes, but I would like to think the city manager wouldn't sign unless I approved it as the form.
And I could add on to that, too. Before signatures come to me, they certainly go through, and, and the city attorney does sign, and that's part of the practice. I wanna note to the point regarding the signatory on, on staff reports, that's something that I brought to the city. Previously, the city attorney didn't normally sign on staff reports, and I thought it was important for the council to understand that, that honestly, your two employees, which are myself and your legal advisor, are signing on those reports, so you know that they not only have policy review from me, but they have legal review from Terry.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I wanna dovetail on Councilwoman Genaway's comments. You know, I would feel more comfortable if, if there was something in writing, as opposed to this is our esprit de corps, our policy, on the graffiti, because I firmly agree with you, that quick removal of graffiti. So if we could tighten that language up in some way, I, I think Ms. Genaway had a great point there, and I just wanna say, let's just add that line in there. Obviously, it's a best efforts, I'm sure, not all the time can they make it within 24 hours, but if that's a best practice, and we put some verbiage in there, I'd appreciate that. But my other questions are, again, to Public Works Director Abizada, very similar to my last question. City, now previously have a contract for these services, yet we spent approximately $70,000 a year on painting and graffiti removal. Who did this for us in the past?
A company called Brent.
Okay, and contract cities, not cities that have staff, do they generally have contracts like this?
Yes, they do.
Thank you very much.
So dovetailing on Councilman Slusiewicz, to our Mr. City Attorney, do we need to make a motion to have the language included in the contract for the 24-hour removal of the graffiti? Or will that be noted by staff and added?
Councilmember Genaway, we could certainly add to the agreement, specific language that says that contractors shall remove graffiti within 24 hours. Now, the agreement consists of the
Now, the agreement consists of the document, it's entitled agreement, it's in your agenda package, also the request for proposal and the proposal. And there's a lot of language in those documents that give us a pretty fair amount of leeway in terms of how we get things done and how fast we get it done with the contractor. But if it'd make the council feel more comfortable with the situation, we certainly could add language to the scope of work in that particular agreement requiring the twenty-four hour removal. I'll turn it over to Public Works Director to comment on that.
I don't see an issue with adding the specific language. Like I said, we have discussed with the contractor and we're very confident that they will respond within twenty-four hours.
Okay, well, I think adding it will make, will show them that that's very important to us. So do we need a motion for that?
I second your motion. I think it's a grand idea.
My, my suggestion would be when you come down to approving this particular agreement, and I don't know if the mayor is thinking about approving them all together or approving them individually, but at that time, when you make the motion to approve it, you include in that motion the additional language that we've just discussed.
Okay.
Okay, because I, my idea was to go through all of these and then approve them en masse. Okay, number seven, I'm assuming we're through with six.
Yeah, as long as we pull it out for approval.
Yeah, it's gonna be part of the motion. Agreement with Real Estate Consulting and Services to provide general maintenance services and the recommendation that the city council approve the base agreement with Real Estate Consulting and Services Incorporated for three years, including the additional extension years, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents. This is item number seven.
Yes, this is for general carpentry, if that city needs from time to time fixing doors, door hinges, window replacements, essentially general handyman-type services. And we did receive one proposal for this contract. We did check the, this company. They were highly recommended by a couple other cities that, they provide service, so we're recommending approval of this particular contract this evening.
Okay. Any comments on this one? All right.
Yes.
Oops, comment.
Okay. We're spending a hundred thousand dollars a year in general maintenance on this in the past. Historically, we haven't had a contract on this. Who was doing most of the work in the past?
Brent Company.
And do most cities use a contract for this that are contract cities that don't have their own labor force?
Yes, they do.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight, agreement with Real Green, Inc. to provide southern neighborhood parks and facilities landscape maintenance. Recommendation that the city council approve the base agreement for southern parks and facilities landscape maintenance with Real Green, Inc. for three years, including the optional extension years, and authorize the city manager execute the contract documents. This is number eight. Any comments?
This was a contract in place. We have used Real Green in the past. We're very happy with the quality of the service. They were the low bidder in this case out of the five companies and staff recommends approval of this contract.
Any comments? Okay, on to number nine. Agreement with Professional Sports Field Maintenance, Inc. to provide skin, brick dust, and turf infield maintenance, whatever that is.
It's very important to the little league people.
I think you need to ask our baseball coaches.
That the city council approve the base agreement for skin, brick dust, and turf infield maintenance with Professional Sports Maintenance for three years, including the optional one-year extension years, and authorize the city manager to execute the documents. This is number nine. Any comments on number nine? Okay.
Do you want an answer to go over it first?
Just a brief comment that Professional Sports Field Maintenance, they have provided the service to the city for a number of years. They provide an excellent service to us and we're recommending that we stay with this company for the next three years.
I had a question in regards to with Real Green being a hundred and six thousand and then obviously going with Professional Sports Field Maintenance at one twenty-seven. Why is it that you didn't want to go with Real Green even though we used them for another contract?
Basically, it boils down to lack of experience on their part. This would have been their very first contract to do this and staff felt that we could be taking a big chance. We want to go with a proven entity.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Abizada, I look at this and I see that the contract expired March 6, 2006, and we've been using them, you know, since then, you know, approximately nine years. Getting nine and a half years probably would be a closer number. I'm assuming that, and as I understand it, our staff highly recommends the, the group that we're picking here. They think that they do the best, so I understand us using them. But is it common to go on month-to-month contracts, you know, for nine years? Or is it something that we normally try to lock in as contract cities go and not wait nine and a half years to figure out that we don't have a contract with a, for something as important as our baseball fields?
It's not common at all, no.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Number ten. Selection of electrical contractors for city maintenance projects. Recommendation, A, approve the base agreement for electrical contract services with Donald Holly &amp; Son, DBA Fullerton Electric for three years, including two optional one-year additional extension years, and B, approve the base agreement for electrical contract services with C and D Electric for three years, including two optional one-year additional extension years, and C, authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents. Senator, you want to comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In this case, we wanted to have two contractors working for us, given the nature of the work that we do and in case of an emergency, if the first contractor is not available to us within twenty-four hours, so we could reach out to the second company. And we have essentially qualified two contractors. Both of them have very good track records and their numbers are listed in the staff report. We're recommending both of these companies to be under contract with the city.
Have we used these companies before?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Any other comments on this one? Go ahead.
Couple of concerns, maybe something a little different this time. The one company, Donald Holly &amp; Son, DBA Fullerton Electric, again, similar to Councilwoman Janeway's, that this isn't local. Fullerton's closer than Pico Rivera, but still not that close. They have an hourly rate that we're going to be paying for. Does that hourly rate start in Fullerton when we make the call? Is there some transportation costs? Or does the rate start when they get on the job? And then same with the other end, when the job's over? Does it end when they're off the job? Who's checking on that to make sure that their hours are only for time spent here? Or is there a transportation hourly charge for that, for that distance?
It's for the time spent on the job. So staff will, with this type of work, what happens is that when we call them out to work on something, we'll get an estimate from them, how long they think they, they need to do this work. So we'll get an upfront estimate from them and then we'll track their progress and they'll only get paid for while they're at the job doing their work.
And then, so you have some, you know, mobile team or supervision that's, you know, because they don't, you don't want to have a staff standing over them the whole time, but that comes and checks on them, so we're checking their time somehow, right?
Yes, staff will check with them when they come in to the city. They start on working something. Of course, periodically, they'll go back and take a look at what they're doing and they'll essentially sign off at the, at end of the project when they're leaving the city.
All right, and then, again, going back to kind of my theme here, the city did not have a contract for electrical services, yet we were spending a hundred and forty-one thousand a year on average for lighting electrical services. Who was doing our work prior to us having a contract?
Brent Company.
Okay, and is it most common for cities to have a contract that are contract cities for electrical work?
Yes, it is.
Thank you again.
Okay. Number eleven, agreement with Neves Landscape, Inc. to provide sports parks and facilities landscape maintenance. The recommendation is that the city council approve the base agreement for sports parks and facilities landscape maintenance with Neves Landscape for three years, including two optional one-year additional extension years, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents. Do you have any comments on this one? Okay, I would.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question. My question is global. I, I reviewed all these contracts and I noticed that all of them have been generated by the Director of Public Works and all of them are over ninety percent related to parks and recreation, isn't it? So if I understand it correctly, when, as my colleague questioned, the timing of this contractor, for example, coming from city of Fullerton, they have to make money and they're entitled to, to make money and we have to be fair. So, so the contractor somehow has to make it up when he's been called during the rush hour traffic to get from Fullerton, you know, north county to, to the south county. So they're gonna come here, they're gonna show up at the Public Works Department on the second floor, or they're gonna go to Parks and Rec Department at the, at the park?
No, they, they will show up at the job site, wherever it might be. It could be a city building or a city park. And I, I think it balances out. These numbers that you see here, these are rates that are locked in for three years at least. And not every, every time that we call them, it's on an emergency basis. There'll be some projects that we'll discuss the issue with them and they could come back in a day or two or maybe a week later. Only on the emergency basis, they would have to basically, as you mentioned, get on the freeway and fight the traffic to get down here.
And if I may interject, under the emergency clauses, they're gonna just charge us for their overtime, too, because typically, emergency cases happen to be at two in the morning, a valve is, you know what I mean?
Correct, yeah. There, there are overtime rates in case they have to show up in the middle of the night. Correct.
All right. And who's the centralized person here? Is it parks or is it Public Works?
It's actually the facilities manager, Rob, who is actually stationed at Crown Valley Park. He'll be working directly with this contractor.
And then the invoice is gonna come to you or to the Parks and Rec Department?
It depends on, again, the nature of work. If it's a purely parks issue, it'll go to the Parks and Recreation. If it's a, it's a street light that needs fixing, it'll come to Public Works.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we've gotten through it. I would like to solicit a motion to accept items five through eleven on a consent calendar with the one addition of the twenty-four hour response time on item number six.
Yes, item number six.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second, please.
Second.
All of the pair?
Aye.
Okay, we did it. Okay, we're gonna go on to other business and council reports and which end did I start with last time? Okay. Fred, your turn.
Well, the only item I have is, I was invited in Hollywood last week to be discussing the politics of infrastructure with the council man from the city of Los Angeles and another councilman from the city of Temple City, and I made it safe from Hollywood without any problems. And that's all I have to report.
You get the part?
I had the third part. The only one from Orange County.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a lot to report. We did go to a sports advisory committee meeting with, I guess, the big change, which I think is good, is to go to quarterly meetings, set meetings, because we're hoping for better representation from the various organizations. And I did attend the last concert in the park. Well, I guess there's one this Friday. That'll be the exact last concert, but the, the most recent concert. And well-attended, no problems to report. And I, I think everyone is using these facilities and enjoying the concerts and enjoying the playgrounds and from my estimation, it's been a pretty doggone good summer. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a reminder, we have our military car wash coming up this month, that's September nineteenth. That'll be at the Le Paul Shopping Center over by Corner Bakery and Blaze Pizza, ten o'clock to two. We really, this is one of our bigger fundraisers, so please, it's for the USS Stockdale. We've got our sailors over there. They're gonna be there washing cars, so please come and support. I did get to the concert as well shortly, but I want to thank Allison, your staff. You guys have done an incredible job this year. So organized, people really enjoying everything. It just, it runs so smooth, so congratulations. One more to go. And I had an interview with Scout Troops 772 over a phone with ten Boy Scouts, helping them with their merit badge. And that was quite interesting, but it was great because they had a lot of questions in regards to our drug prevention program and trying to give them enough information, but not too much information, as well as what we're doing to conserve water, so that was great. I did attend the Crown Valley Elementary School meeting last week and just a reminder, they are having another meeting tomorrow. If you want to attend, it's six PM at the elementary, at Crown Valley Elementary School. And I did a ribbon cutting at Zachary's Orthodontics, celebrating, I know Jerry was there as well, celebrating many, many years of their business in the city. Thank you.
Ms. Janeway.
Okay, at our last council meeting, the council approved the Laguna Niguel Junior Civic Workshop, and we are getting ready for that, just to let you know that the first one will be on October thirteenth, right here at City Hall in the community room. Want to give kudos to our city staff for participating in the Relay for Life and the City Fights Back Team. Thank you for representing the city or representing the staff. Did an awesome job. During the week, I went to a panel on cybersecurity that was hosted by Senator Walters. And I'm the vice chair of the Orange County Public Library Advisory Board. And as that, I, on Saturday, I attended the grand reopening of the San Clemente Public Library. So congratulations to the city of San Clemente. They just added five thousand square feet to their library. And if you recall, several months ago, we gave a grant to the Friends of the Library for the Laguna Niguel Library. So I went there and looked at the new furniture. Looks really nice. We purchased tables and chairs, or the Friends did with our money, tables and chairs for the community room. And the community room at the library is used quite a bit. And they even have on Sunday afternoons, free movies. So, you know, go over there, check out the Friends of the Library. It's a great resource in our community. Yes, the boss was in Laguna Niguel on last Friday. I mean, it's been said, Allison, thank you, thank you, thank you. It was a fabulous time. And what I really like about our summer concerts is that the whole family's there. Little children are running around, they're playing, you know, they're going over to the playground equipment or they're tumbling down the hill, but the whole family is there having a great time. And last thing, happy ninetieth birthday, Marion Ferguson. Along with some of my colleagues, yesterday, we attended her birthday party at Marion Ferguson Elementary, which was named after her. And the students were so excited. It was a lot of fun. They were so excited and they really sang "Happy Birthday" with gusto as she was walking down to the area where the cake was and the speeches were. And there was one little boy at the school who had the same birthday as Marion. So that was cute. And thank you, Marion, for all that you've done for Orange County. And that's it.
Okay. Well, I did a few little things. As a member of the executive committee of the Orange County Fire Authority, I attended an executive committee meeting and also a board meeting. And I want to remind you, there's, I think, twenty-six people on their board, so when they have their comments, it goes a little longer, but actually, it runs pretty well. I was at the Relay for Life, put on by the American Cancer Society. I think some of us all were there. And that's a great event. Every year, we have that up at the school. I attended a performance of Fiddler on the Roof in the amphitheater, and that was really fun. And I hope we can give continued support to the, I guess they call themselves the Laguna Niguel Players.
Community theater.
Community theater. They did a nice job, very enthusiastic, and it was a great production. I, too, went to the Marion Ferguson Ninetieth, and it was a great event. And I went on Wikipedia and actually looked up Marion Ferguson's bio, and I, that is one incredible woman, I'll tell you, the things that she's done in the assembly, the senate, and also she was the director of education for the state. I mean, just amazing resume. Okay, I think we're gonna go on to, any comments from the staff here? Anybody wants to say anything? I'm gonna go down the line. Matthew, Chief, you got anything you want to tell us about?
Yes, sir. I hope I don't steal any thunder from DC Brian Bryce, but I do want to mention that September is National Preparedness Month. There are three points we want to make, is get a kit, make a plan, and be informed. For the residents of Laguna Niguel, you can go to readyoc.org for further information. You can go to alertoc.com to sign up for alert, emergency alerts. And you can also contact our emergency manager here in the city, Phil Robinson, by contacting or calling the city during normal business hours during the week.
Dave?
Nothing to report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Do the debits equal the credits?
As always. As always.
Okay. Terry?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Brian?
Lieutenant took most of my stuff there. But I don't believe there'll be a council meeting before September 11th comes around. We will be having a ceremony up at our headquarters, along with all our local fire stations in the morning, that'll start somewhere around 8:45 in the morning, signifying the time that the plane struck the tower. So if you're around and available, please stop by any of your fire stations or feel free to come up to our headquarters facility as well. Thank you.
And I just would like to add, Brian Bryce made a presentation of the Rotary Club not too long ago and it was fantastic. And he had a great format, got a lot of questions, and I think a lot of people learned something about the Fire Authority that they didn't know. Pauline, you have any?
Yes, just real quick, as council knows, we've been soliciting proposals for a communications assessment. Happy to report that we got three proposals, the deadline was last Friday, so staff's going to be reviewing those and hopefully coming up with a company that can conduct that assessment for us, so that's it.
Jeff?
Nothing to add. It is nice to have some company here at the table.
Well, good, are you holding hands?
Is our recently hired human resources manager, Debbie Bell, so like to welcome her here and glad to have her.
Welcome, Debbie.
It's very nice to be here.
Is that all you want to say?
Well, thank you for selecting me and I'm glad to be both a worker and a resident of your beautiful community.
You don't have to grovel, but, okay. Eileen?
Yes, I also want to welcome Debbie and I'm grateful and thankful that you're here. And that's it, thank you.
And our manager of good times, Allison?
Hello. Just wanted to report a couple nice attendances that we had this summer. Shakespeare by the Sea had 450 people, they put on a great event, Fiddler on the Roof, which many of you attended, they had three shows, 353 people at the first one, 83 people at the 2:00 PM matinee showing, which I thought was still pretty good considering it was about 150 degrees out. And on the third show, 430 people on a Sunday night, so they had a very successful run in the park. Also, our skate park had 65 people at their last late-night skate activity, so we thought that was a really good attendance as well. Also coming up, last concert this Friday, Tommy Tassie and the Authentics have been here closing out our series for about, I think it's their 24th year, so very popular. And we have a family dive-in movie coming up on September 11th, and it's free, all we ask is that children are over the age of five. That's it.
Thank you. Dan? Now, is there anything more? I think we grilled you enough. Okay, Mr. City Attorney? City Manager, I'm sorry.
Thought that was enough, great. Just very quickly, and I wanted to also mention to the council that, you know, on behalf of the administration, we're very pleased that Debbie's here with us. She, she has a resume that the council should be very comfortable with from the standpoint of being able to, to attract a top-quality public sector manager, someone with 12 years of experience in the city of Chino, is their Deputy Director of Human Resources, nearly probably 20 to 22 years of experience all in, including experience at the cities of Monrovia and in San Marino. So we're very, very lucky to have her with us. We're also recently, we're in the process of bringing on our purchasing manager, so there'll be another person that'll also be responsible for not only purchasing but contract compliance as well, a very reputable known procurement manager in the area. So the standpoint of bringing on experts as this, as this organization continues to mature and grow older, is certainly going to ensure that the council's vision of ever-growing and improving management continues. So I wanted to welcome Debbie here and knowing that the human resource part of our organization is in good hands. With that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Before our city attorney reads us into closed session, I would like to close tonight's city council meeting in memory of Ron Perella. The Laguna Niguel City Council extends our deepest sympathy on his recent passing, there's a picture of Ron up on the board behind me. He was a Citizen of the Year in 2006, he was a great guy, he was involved in many organizations in the city. He was past chairman of the Holiday Parade, was one of the things he did, and I worked with him on the Military Support Committee and also with some other committees. He was a great guy, I think he was 85 or 86 when he passed, and it, we had, there was an eulogy for him today at the Rotary Club and it was about 20 minutes long, you know, in a Rotary meeting, that's a long time. And just a catalog of all the things he's done for the city. So I, I think he's such a, was a wonderful man and we've lost a great citizen. There will be a memorial service for Ron Saturday, September 26th, at 10:00 AM at St. Timothy's Catholic Church, that's on Crown Valley Parkway. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, could you read us into closed session?
Yes, Mayor McCloskey, members of the council, we do have a scheduled closed session for tonight on labor negotiations. I don't anticipate that there will be any report out from that closed session, and I believe the council will be adjourning the meeting from closed session.
Okay. I want to thank you all for attending the meeting and all those watching on television. We're going to retire to closed session.